Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to welcome you to the 5:15 City Council Meeting of March 6, 2019. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Parlier.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Here.
Thank you, and welcome to all of you. Thank you for engaging in the civic process. We're so glad to have students here from CSUB, from Professor Crable's class. I think we have two students, welcome. And then our renegades, welcome, Professor Holmes' class. We had the pleasure tonight of having our invocation led by Bishop Bernard Wallace of Church of Christ Christian Ministries. And thank you so much, Bishop, for hosting the Martin Luther King Church Service where you spoke an outstanding word and remembered the faith aspects of Dr. King's life. And after Bishop prays, we will have Arisi Lopez, who's a senior at Golden Valley High School, to lead us in the pledge. Arisi is ASB president. She has a 4.0 GPA. We the People team, which captured second place in the 21st Congressional District, not an easy feat, congratulations. Student representative in the Golden Valley School Site Council and captain of the volleyball team, and she hopes to go to UC Berkeley or UCLA. All right, so Pastor now, would you all please stand?
Thank you for this opportunity. Eternal God, our Father, we come now and we bow in humble submission to your will. We thank you for an opportunity to be in the presence of men and women that have a desire to serve. So we, as servants of God, come to say thank you. We know that we live in trying times, but when the righteous is in power, the world is blessed. So Lord, as we approach this meeting tonight, everything that is on the agenda, let it come forward in peace and recognize this chamber, so that all that we do will be done decent and in order. Lord, we recognize that there are many who struggle with unity, but without unity, we fail. Lord, help us to overcome the oldest military strategy in the world of the divide and conquer. Let us stand together as one new man, trusting that we can do all things through Christ who strengthens us. This is a humble servant's prayer. In Jesus' name, we pray, let us together say amen.
Amen.
And amen.
Thank you. Arisi.
Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Thank you very much, Pastor. And, Arisi, all the best with your aspirations for medical school and becoming a pediatrician. Thank you so much, and congratulations on all your outstanding accomplishments. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public statements.
Actually, before we do public statements, just a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn your phones off, and in keeping with council policy, council members aren't allowed to send or receive electronic communications during the meeting. Please be courteous in the use of cameras and videos. Applause is allowed during the presentations portion of the meeting, but it's not allowed at other times of the meeting, and for safety reasons, no signs are allowed in the council chambers. Thank you so much for your cooperation. We look forward to a great meeting. Madam Clerk, would you please read, you already read, the first item, which is the public statements, and let me share with you how the public statements operate. All statements are given a three-minute time limit, 15 minutes per topic. If you have comments that are longer than your verbal statement, go ahead and submit those in writing and give those to the clerk, and she'll give copies to the council. Please avoid any behavior that disrupts the meeting. We're very interested and concerned with your issues. Due to the public notice requirement of the Brown Act, council members aren't allowed to take action when an item isn't on the agenda. However, they can refer your matter to staff and request that staff follow up with you, and they can refer it also to committee. So at this point, would you please read the name of the first public speaker?
Mayor Go, we have received six speaker cards this evening, two regarding a single subject, and additional two regarding the Bakersfield Public Safety and Vital City Services Oversight Committee, and two regarding separate subjects. Our first speaker this evening is Robin Robinson regarding CityServe.
Welcome, Pastor. Please introduce yourself.
Thank you. My name is Robin Robinson, and I am the Community Development Church Engagement Director for CityServe Kern County. Good evening, Mayor Go and Mayor, Vice Mayor Parlier, fellow council members. Thank you so much for the privilege of briefly sharing with you this evening about a new resource in our city and county called CityServe. City Serve has been in operation for just over a year and has already served so many who are in need here in our surrounding community. City Serve was formed in October of 2017 with the partnership of larger organizations. Underneath City Serve include World Vision, Children's Hunger Fund International, Convoy of Hope, and Costco National, as well as we've received loads from Home Depot, Office Depot, Michaels, and Staples. City Serve has goods and kind supply chain coming into our city and is being distributed through local churches here to families who are experiencing true physical needs. Churches are trusted resources for people and are also located in neighborhoods where many broken people do not have transportation or services, and sometimes are unable to get where help or resources may be. We've been partnering with the county public health department over the past six months to launch and help see the waste hunger food program, bring food into the neighborhoods of our county through the local neighborhood churches to where the people are who are really in need of this healthy food. Churches who are in the neighborhoods where many of these needy families and children live give an amazing opportunity to bring help and support that could help keep kids from turning to other sources in the midst of their despair. To date, we've been able to distribute over 104,000 pounds of food through our neighborhood churches. We are also partnering with Love Incorporated to see people's needs not only met, but through the local churches, there will be an ongoing relationship with families who are willing to spend time investing in an individual or a family by staying in contact with them. Instead of just dropping stuff off or just being a delivery service, true relationship will grow. Transformation in our city will come through relationships, when we're giving people a hand up and not just a handout, when we are continuing to visit an individual or family who needs people who aren't where they are in life, consistently showing up, listening to, and speaking into the relationship that is being built, as well as healthy accountability and the ability to see them engage in other services offered to them that they may not be responding to due to lack of motivation, self-worth, or an ability to step into something alone. We believe much of this is the call of the local church. The Tim Biblical Initiative includes the orphan, the widow, the poor, the afflicted, the addicted, the oppressed, the prisoner, the vulnerable exploited, just to name a few. Locally, we have over 40 churches right now across our city, many in the areas of most need. These are the areas where so many people need interaction with others who can bring not only something they may need, but also encouragement for better days ahead. We've partnered with Kern Adult Program and have several of their clients coming to serve and sort at City Serve, giving them an opportunity to find purpose and build relationships with people there, as well as we've connected with the Dream Center downtown for homeless teens and foster youth to assist them with some of their needs, and to see some of these young adults come and serve sorting as a way of building a resume of service. Trucksloads of product are coming in every day over the past year. City Serve Kern County is a tangible way to help people by meeting a need and then continuing the relationship to see people move forward with friendship and accountability. City Serve Kern County is the model that will grow across the nation. The greatest challenge we are facing is sustaining the supply chain, reaching into the community to help us continue to bring these goods into our city and county to help those in needs. City Serve will be, and already has, okay, has connected with single moms, single dads, grandparents raising their children, so many people living in poverty or need to meet some of these great things. Churches coming together, yes.
We're over, body.
Oh, we're over.
Yes, we're over. Thank you so much.
Yes, I gave you a folder. If you could look at that, that's got some information for you guys. Have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next public speaker, please.
The next two public speakers are speaking regarding a 40-day life vigil and protecting protection of the city inhabitants. The first speaker is Terri Palmquist.
Good evening, and it's been a while since I've seen all of you guys, and I just wanted to let you know that last night, this morning, we started our 22nd prayer vigil at 2508 Street. It's the Family Planning Associates, and sadly, that is where babies are killed by choice. And what I would like to do in light of everything that's been going on in the news is just draw attention to what happens at 2508. These little babies, and I've provided one for each of you if you would like, are about the average of this size baby. Baby's heart begins beating 18 to 21 days after conception. If we measure life from a heartbeat, our city kills approximately 70 or so babies a month. That is not okay. And so this little guy is able to suck his thumb. It's not a mystery anymore. It is not a blob of tissue. This little baby is a person, and I have provided you all with one of these baby models if you would like them. And I just ask, you say, "In God we trust," and God says, "Before I formed you in the womb, I knew you." Each one of you, God knew before He put the spark of life inside of you. So please, keep us in prayer, and if you're going by 2508 Street, we could use a little encouragement, a little thumbs up, and these babies are who we're standing up for. God bless you, and if, I just want to also thank the police department. If they ever want to just kind of make around, things are getting a little more wilder downtown. This is, like I said, this is our 22nd time of doing 24 hours a day for 40 days. God bless you and take a stand for life. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Palmquist. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Tim Palmquist.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and council members. My name is Tim Palmquist, and as you know, I'm here to talk to you about our concerns about children being killed in our city. Now, you may, you may say, "This is something that is outside your control." That's the thing that's commonly said. This is under the control of the Supreme Court. But our own charter here in the City of Bakersfield says that you, you, the city, have the power to define, prohibit, abate, suppress, and prevent all things detrimental to the health, morals, comfort, safety, convenience, and welfare of the inhabitants of the city. Now, understanding that some of these inhabitants of the city, as you've been given these little models that show a fully-formed human body, some of these inhabitants of the city live inside their mother's wombs, but they are inhabitants of the city just the same. And so it's something that I hope you consider. Is there a time that you, council members, can be bold enough to take a stand for what's right, to take a stand for the lives of our own inhabitants, to take a stand for the powers that you express in your own charter? That's what we're asking you to do here. And we know that certain cities say they're going to be sanctuary cities, and they're going to defy the immigration laws and things like that. Is it that bizarre to think a city could be a sanctuary city to protect their own inhabitants? Don't think so. Well, this is something you may know that was discussed in the past, in the previous council, and some of you were part of those discussions. And let me remind you that that matter was not voted down, but it was tabled. And so it is something that you could bring up again if you choose to do so. But as we heard at the beginning of this meeting tonight, you can do all things through Christ who strengthens you. If you don't think you have the power to take a bold stand, to take a historic stand to protect human life, Jesus says you do.
Thank you, Mr. Palmquist. Next speaker, please.
Bishop Francisco regarding churches.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I count it an honor and a privilege to stand before you today. In the Bible, it says that, "Submit yourself to authority because they guard your soul." Once I accepted Christ and accepted that scripture and submitted myself to authority, my soul has been guarded. I've been more peaceful in my life. I was here last week, last City Council, concerning two churches that I had been both involved with and in our community, and we both, the God that I served and their God, we had a stand, and my God prevailed. In the way that they're, they're used to doing things, these two churches, is one is St. Peters Missionary Restoration Church and Compassion Christian Center. And then the things that they are used to doing is covering people that God has given something to say concerning the church. And I did that. Compassion Christian Center urged me out of their church, but everything I told them, it prevailed. The Lord told me to tell St. Oscar Anthony, St. Peters, that he was the problem in the black community. And behind the darkness, they sent a guide to me and threatened me and told me to leave the churches, leave the church, and advised me to stay away. So I said, "Lord, you said that to me, and you have never lied to me, and everything that you have said to me have came to pass." So I said, "How am I going to deal with that?" And he said, "Well, first bring it to the City Council," and then he said, because of the threat, he wanted me to tell them that if they didn't believe and trust and believe that the God that I serve said this, that for me to tell them that they call on their God, and I'll call on my God, and the God that prevail, let the people follow God. And that's what I'm saying tonight, and I know that the word will get back to them. If they don't believe that the God that I serve said those things to them, I ask them to call on their God, and I'll call on my God, and the God that prevail, then let the people follow that God. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bishop. Next speaker, please.
The next two speakers will be speaking on the Measure N Oversight Committee. The first speaker, Mary Helen Barrow.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Go and members of the council. I just wanted to be here just to make a brief statement and urge you to fill the vacancy that is on the Oversight Committee for Measure N with a woman. There are many very qualified candidates, but I kept watching the vote when the first members were appointed, and I know that the council members could see, as the vote went along, that there was only one woman ultimately, and I was so disappointed, and so I'm hoping that the vacancy that is open now will be filled with a woman. And I know there are many qualified people, but I would like you to consider Melanie Farmer because she represents the small businesses in Bakersfield on the DBA, and so many of the other members represent major corporations. But I'll leave the final decision to you all, but I hope it is a lady. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Barrow. Next speaker, please.
The final speaker for tonight is Kimberly Kirchmer.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Go, Vice Mayor Parlier, and council members. I'm Kimberly Kirchmer, speaking on behalf of Women's March Kern County, the American Association of University Women, Latina Leaders of Kern County, and She Power Leadership Academy, and the League of Women Voters of Kern County. We thank you, members of the council, for this opportunity to address an issue we know many of you may feel like it's a rock in your shoe. I'm referring to the selection of the nine members of the Measure N Oversight Committee, the final outcome of which, as you know, we feel substantially under-represents the women in our community. Our previous request to have a do-over of the selection process is now a moot point, which we understand. The committee has already had its first meeting. However, now with a newly-vacated seat, we want to press again how important it is to fill that seat with a woman. Realizing the difficulty of the logistics involved in opening an application process to the general public once again, we still ask serious consideration be given to that process. Our priority is, however, that the current opening be filled with a highly-qualified woman, like many of those who did apply. This priority, we feel, would be more equitably, would more equitably represent our community in helping guide decisions that will have a significant impact on the City of Bakersfield, both in the immediate future and for years to come. We know you understand the importance of equitable representation in all aspects of city life, particularly with government itself, and we all thank you in advance for the thoughtful consideration we know you will give to this request, and are confident that you will make the best possible decision for the women and the men and the families of Bakersfield. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kirchmer. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Under Workshops, we have Keep Bakersfield Beautiful Committee update.
Thank you. Mr. Fiddler, do you wish to make any comments?
Honorable Mayor and council members, this evening, Heather Pinella, Chair of Keep Bakersfield Beautiful Committee, and Jessica Felix, the City of Bakersfield's Keep Bakersfield Beautiful Committee member, will be providing a presentation of the updates.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us today.
Jessica, can you speak into our, are both of them active?
Okay, sorry about that. That's better. Thank you. It's nice to see you all again, and right now, of course, many of you know, it's a really busy time for greater, with the Great American Cleanup, our main event coming up. Heather will be getting into that in a little bit. First, I'm going to cover what we've accomplished in the last year or so with you and our community. So last year, we had several thousand volunteers again, and they cleaned up a staggering nearly 200,000 pounds of litter and illegal dump sites, recycled thousands of pounds in tires, another 85,000 nearly in various items, and they were able to plant more than 40 trees in several locations. And they truly do such a community service, our volunteers, and they do it with a smile, they do it with their families, they do it with their coworkers, and when you come to one of our events, you feel that community spirit that's building and being shared among everybody. Sorry about that. I'm not used to doing it so far away like this without a clicker. Here we go. So we do have volunteer opportunities every single week, of course, but we also have several programs that some of you may not know about. We have our after-school presentations. You see a picture of some of the kids down below there. We talk about litter, we talk about recycling, and we talk about giving back to the community, volunteering with us at Keep Bakersfield Beautiful. We do most of our presentations with the Bakersfield City School District, but we are available to do that for any youth organization. And we also have the Adopt a Street Program, which includes our local highways, such as Stockdale Highway, with the Adopt a Garden that we have. We have two, one in Oleanders currently seeking memberships, it's right at the corner of Fourth and I in Ward Two, and we also have one in Ward Seven with the Greenfield Walking Group. And the gardens, there's something that you can pop in and, you know, coordinate and pop in and help out on Saturdays, but it's also something that people can adopt a plot in. With our Yard of a Season Program, which you can see another photo with Mayor Go and one of our advisory board members there, we have this program where members of our community can get this yard sign for having the yard of the season because it's the most basic, simple way that people can do their part to keep, literally keep, Bakersfield beautiful and have it be the command of community that we all want to call home. And as you can see from their faces, the recipients of this recognition truly appreciate it. As far as the Freeway Litter Program, it's been going on for nearly six years. We'll have our sixth anniversary in May, and this year, earlier this year, we started out January nicely, putting four more crews for a total of eight crews to work, and that was thanks to Mayor Go and the leadership of the Keep Bakersfield Beautiful Committee, so thank you again for that. We are having the Bakersfield Homeless Center crews clean up five days a week now, and we are still also accepting sponsorships for West Side Parkway cleanup. We, I am in the process right now of renewing our sponsorship with CBCC. A lot of the sponsors have returned, but again, there is some room for more sponsors on there, which of course receives signage on West Side Parkway. And now I'm going to turn it over to Heather, our chair, to explain what we're working on now with the Great American Cleanup and what's ahead.
Thanks, Jessica.
Mayor Go, Vice Mayor Parlier, members of the council, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Heather Pinella, and I'm honored to serve as the 2019 Chair of Keep Bakersfield Beautiful. I'd like to introduce our members, and if they're in the audience, if they could please stand. We have Vice Chair Nate Meeks for Ward Four Alternate, John Enriquez, who's the Merrill appointee, Anastasia Lester for Ward One, Anna Smith for Ward One Alternate, Ray Scott for Ward Three, Jennifer Pitcher for Ward Three Alternate, Brooks Douglas for Ward Four, Crystal Pitthong for Ward Five, Matthew Martin for Ward Five Alternate, Bob LaRue for Ward Six, Sophia Felix for Ward Six Alternate, Paul Yanez for Ward Seven, Teresa Olson, Ward Seven Alternate, and then Jessica Felix, of course. And our advisory board is comprised of Chair Kathy Butler, Steve Montgomery, and Tony Martinez. Also, Mitch Jimmerson has joined us as well. And I'm going to talk about our goals for the coming year. We met in January at our strategic planning meeting. At that time, we talked about many opportunities where we could
all the wards and making sure we're doing cleanups everywhere so that the city is really feeling our impact. The third thing that we really talked about is social media. You can't get enough of it these days. Social media, first of all, the cost makes a lot of sense for an organization staffed by volunteers. We would be able to invite people to our opportunities through those. Secondarily, we'd be able to share our word out and then also use it as an opportunity to share educational facts. There's a lot of times when we're doing committee outreach where we realize people just don't understand the value of properly putting their trash in the right receptacles. So that would be a big part of it, too. Increase our tree plantings and then allow our public nominations for the Beautiful Bakersfield program that's focused on businesses. And one of the biggest reasons we're here tonight is the upcoming Great American Cleanup, Saturday, April 6th. We will be participating yet again in the Great American Cleanup. There's going to be a meeting on March 18th to talk to those captains to get everybody ready. We're doing something new this year. We're registering people through Eventbrite, which is going to be, I think, beneficial to really making the outreach easy. We'd like to kind of increase also our impact through social media so they can follow us on Facebook at Keep Bakersfield Beautiful and at our handle for Instagram, which is This turns out to be a lovely day where you can select your opportunity for cleanups. It's a great job for churches, businesses, other organizations to kind of rally together. From 8:00 to 10:00 is the cleanup, and then we go downtown to Yocets Park and we do... Sorry, that's very... We go to Yocets Park for a big barbecue and a big community event. It's always a wonderful day. One of the big things that we are still asking for is volunteers and, of course, those sponsorships. One of the biggest parts of the day are those bright green shirts, and you can see them in the photos up there. Not only are they a sense of community and inclusion for everybody that participates, but there's a safety aspect to it, too. You certainly can't miss a big crew in those green shirts. So we're looking for sponsors still for that and hope that we can have the biggest one ever this year. That's really what we're hoping for. And again, Eventbrite is where you'll go to sign up, and that page is live as of today. There we go. Does anyone have any questions?
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick thank you to all of the committee members who work so hard and volunteer their time.
It's a great group.
Yeah, it's a wonderful group. I also want to recognize the Ward Two member, Monica Kider, and the alternate is Norma Jackson.
My apologies.
No, no, don't apologize. It's okay. They're wonderful people and they work very hard.
They're so good. They're above the list, maybe.
I assume so. Assume that was the problem. And I also want to thank Solid Waste for all the great resources they provide. I've had a monthly cleanup day in East Bakersfield for the last five years, and it's been wonderful to work with the city. So thank you, Jessica, and all those who are a part of that. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, Heather, Jessica, thank you so much for the presentation and to the board members. You know, I came off KBB. It's a wonderful organization, wonderful committee. You're doing just great works out in the community, and I want to thank you for the presentation. I asked for KBB to come and give this presentation. I think it's important for the council to hear.
Thank you for the opportunity and taking the work that we do seriously. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks again.
Thanks.
Heather and Jessica, thank you so much for your investment. I know this is a lot of work, and we see lots of smiles picking up trash. So thank you very much for keeping Bakersfield beautiful. Next item, please.
Under Appointments, we have appointment of one regular member and one alternate member, Ward Seven, to the Bakersfield Youth Commission due to vacancies. We've received applications for appointment from Marari Buena Vuelos and Adia Marino.
Thank you. These appointments are by ward, therefore no ballots are necessary for this. I'm going to call on Vice Mayor Parlier for the Ward Seven nominations for regular committee and an alternate. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I have great people to appoint tonight for the Youth Commission. Ms. Vuelos, she attends Golden Valley High School, where she has an outstanding 4.16 grade point average. And Ms. Marino attends Ridgewell High School, where she's in honors physics, and I know they're going to be a great addition to the committee, and I welcome these young ladies to it pending the vote. So I nominate both of them. Thank you.
Okay. You have a nomination here and a motion. Is that a motion?
It is, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. We have a motion. Please cast your votes. We're still getting used to our new technology, so you know how that is. Just give us a little bit of time. It all works until the moment. Thank you. Next item, please.
Also under Appointments, we have one appointment, Ward One, to the Planning Commission due to the termination of David Strong, term to expire April 30th, 2023.
This appointment is also by ward, so Councilmember Rivera, would you please present your nominations for the regular committee member and alternate committee member, please?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just nominating one committee member, and that is Michael Bowers to fill the vacancy on the Planning Commission, representing Ward One.
Thank you. Is that a motion?
Yes.
Thank you. You have a motion. Please cast your votes.
Motion was unanimously approved.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Still under Appointments, we have appointment of one regular committee member to the Bakersfield Public Safety Vital City Services Measure Citizens Oversight Committee, term to expire February 6th, 2022.
Thank you. Mr. Tandy.
Honorable mayor and members of the city council, we identified in the staff report two alternate means to approach this issue. One would be to revert to the list of what was five. One is withdrawn, so it's now four, which was your last ballot. The other would be to instruct staff to start a new recruitment process, and the choice is up to the body.
Thank you. Colleagues. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, we obviously have two pass that we can take tonight, and if we went off the existing list, obviously those applicants are highly qualified. But my worry is if we go off of those current applicants, then we have a vacancy in the future. Do we continue to whittle down that list, or do we go out to the well again? Because I don't want to disenfranchise anybody within the community. I know there's been some publicity that happened, whether we made mistakes or not. You know, maybe there was a perception there that it did happen. But by going out to the community again, there might be people that were interested or are interested in it now that weren't before due to publicity. So in the transparency of the process, I would ask, and I'm going to make a motion, that we put it out to the public again.
Thank you. Any other speakers? You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Consent calendar items 8A through 8AB for approval. We've received a memorandum regarding item 8A correcting a Scrivener's error in the minutes. An additional staff memorandum was received regarding item 8C stating the developer has agreed that the meandering sidewalk along Stockdale Highway will be eight feet in width rather than the six feet that is shown on the site plan, and that the landscaping will remain at a minimum of 10 feet in width.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, we obviously have two pass that we can take tonight, and if we went off the existing list, obviously those applicants are highly qualified. But my worry is if we go off of those current applicants, then we have a vacancy in the future. Do we continue to whittle down that list, or do we go out to the well again? Because I don't want to disenfranchise anybody within the community. I know there's been some publicity that happened, whether we made mistakes or not. You know, maybe there was a perception there that it did happen. But by going out to the community again, there might be people that were interested or are interested in it now that weren't before due to publicity. So in the transparency of the process, I would ask, and I'm going to make a motion, that we put it out to the public again.
Thank you. Any other speakers? You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Consent calendar items 8A through 8AB for approval. We've received a memorandum regarding item 8A correcting a Scrivener's error in the minutes. An additional staff memorandum was received regarding item 8C stating the developer has agreed that the meandering sidewalk along Stockdale Highway will be eight feet in width rather than the six feet that is shown on the site plan, and that the landscaping will remain at a minimum of 10 feet in width.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd request that a letter be drafted in opposition to SB 246, which would impose a 10% wellhead tax on the petroleum energy sector. I would also like a resolution coming back to the council opposing it, too, and expressing the importance of this regional industry and noting the thousands of jobs that it has created, including high-paying jobs for underserved populations, being the non-college-educated minority populations and those released from prison. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, any other requests to speak? I don't show anything. Seeing none, I had the opportunity to meet with the governor and his staff in the last... Three times, actually, in the last few weeks, and to be able to highlight our ongoing need for help with the homeless situation. We'll be going back up there on March 20th, and I think we made it very clear, those of us who met with him, and he seemed to be understanding that the Central Valley deserves priority. We also spoke about water and other issues important to our constituents and grateful that he's giving us attention. So seeing no other requests to speak, thank you very much for being here tonight, and we stand adjourned at 6:01.